I called this meeting of the Planning and Plan of Conservation and Development Committee to order at 7:10 p.m. First order of business is called to order, action on the minutes of September 23, 2025, our most recent meeting prior to this. I did not see anything that needed correction. Any other members of the committee see a need to change anything in the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our September 23, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. So the main thing we have to talk about tonight is our November workshop that we have coming up. We want to talk about the format of it, how it's going to proceed. It will be held here right now.
Yep.
And I think Abby wants to talk a little bit about how she sees that going forward. We can, obviously, members of this committee can respond and make suggestions. So Abby, I'll turn things over to you to start.
Thanks, Chris. So I put together this first packet, and I want to start by saying, too, I just thought it would be helpful if we had a starting point. I'm in no way wedded to this. This is the committee, so I want your feedback input because I want this to be what you all want. So it's going to be at 7 o'clock here on November 13. I thought it would be helpful to have at least first an introduction so folks who are attending know what exactly a P O C D is. So just a quick overview of what the plan is, statute requirements, the process that this committee will follow, and then introducing the committee members. So I envision that kind of being, you know, just 10 to 15 minutes more formal, folks sitting in chairs, PowerPoint with a few slides to kind of make sure everyone's on the same page from the beginning. And then...
I think that worked really well with the Affordable Housing Committee, which convened a couple of years ago that I chaired, just so people understand what we're here to talk about and what we're not here to talk about, which is, I don't want double stripes on my street and such like that. We're at a much higher level of analysis than that. So I think it might help us to have the public comment be more productive if they know what we're really here to do.
And then followed by that, I see it as just kind of an open session, self-guided table setup to cover these different topic areas. So that's, again, I want it to be a little bit more interactive. I think what might be a little bit more valuable as opposed to a typical public session where someone comes up to the podium, they provide their thoughts. This way, again, they can take their time at each station that will have the different topic areas to provide thoughtful feedback. And that's kind of leading into the second part of this, where I went through the existing Plan of Conservation Development, looked at the key subject areas, and then tried to pull that out and draft questions to address each of those topic areas. And I also see this as potentially turning into an online survey. So I'd like to do both. So folks who aren't able to attend the public workshop will have an opportunity to complete a survey online. So going through this, I was trying to think about how it would work for the workshop and then how it can translate into an online survey. Some of it for the workshop will be more interactive and illustrative, you know, asking folks to mark on maps and draw things, which I think will be great. It's a good opportunity for that. But then also, how will we get similar information for people who are participating online? So, Chris, do you want me to walk through these sections?
Yeah. The other thing I thought I wanted to clear to everybody on the committee is how we're going to staff the tables and how, you know, people should express two or three tables that they'd be willing to sit at. I'm hoping that we have pretty full participation of the committee that night. Unfortunately, co-chair Lockwood is not available that evening. So as many of us as can be there, I'd really appreciate it. I think that will make it much more valuable. So how did you envision people kind of, how did you envision divvying up the different topics?
To be honest, I hadn't really given that much thought, just looking at how many we end up landing at, and then if there can be someone close by in case someone has questions about how to do something. I think it's just important that we're listening to the public.
I agree.
So I anticipate, hopefully, that there won't be too much responsibility for people who are actually staffing the table.
Again, it's more like, I think, making sure that we guide people towards the questions we're trying to answer as opposed to something that's really not legally part of what our job is. So if you want to just walk us through your points.
So the first section I have, vision, values, community statement, and priorities. So I know that's a lot, but kind of who are we? So one, what is special about Granby? What do you like slash what are you proud of about Granby? And what do you dislike about Granby? So again, this is just to kind of get a sense of how people feel about the community and what's important to them. So I see what is special about Granby as just being kind of a free form. It's just, you know, the question on top of the board. Folks can write their thoughts on it, sticky notes, marker, whatever. So it'll be just a large piece of paper that we can take back and analyze after. And then what are you proud of and what do you dislike? We did something similar with the Granby Center study, which I thought was helpful. So you actually have sticky dots. So it's just a large aerial map of the town, and people can take a green dot, put it, you know, what they like. You know, if they're a fan of Holcomb Farm, they go up, they put a green dot next to that. If there's something they don't like, they can put, you know, a red dot. The intersection project, I don't know, whatever it might be.
Just the name.
We just have that dumb nut.
The rotor.
Definitely don't go to the board and spend the whole night on the rotor if that's on.
So I think that, you know, that'd be kind of interesting and leave, you know, an option again, sticky notes nearby. People can tag and write more comments, you know, nearby. And this, again, will just give a general sense of what and how people feel about the Any thoughts or feedback on that?
Yeah, I went to the public workshop for the Center Study Committee, and I thought that was really helpful. I thought it was very interactive. People really got into it, and it was much better than what, like you were saying, people just coming up to a podium and talking. They had refreshments there, so we might want to consider some refreshments, too.
That always helps.
For the kids.
So they, did they write on the docs? Like, how did you know, like, or did you have, like, a...
Yeah, so it's literally just like a visualization with the doc, and then there is an opportunity that you could write on the side, yeah, if you want to explain more.
Exactly, yeah.
So truthfully, this is good. The challenge is going to come after, right? And taking all this information and making sense of it and trying to put it together as we pull into the plan and inform the foundation of the plan. But we'll worry about that after the 13th.
So I'm certainly willing to help that, help out with that. I was helping back with the town center stuff.
Great. Excellent. That's terrific.
Yeah. Data analytics is part of my gig, so.
Okay. Awesome. Let me go with that one?
I think so.
Okay. And then B, so our vision for the future. So this is trying to get at community themes and overall vision. So some options. We believe that in 10 years, we will find that Granby is... dot, dot, dot. So again, just very open-ended, what people envision. Very similar in an ideal world, what would Granby be like in the future? Alternatively, there's an option, we believe in 10 years, we will find that housing... economic development... dot, dot, dot. And that was the format from the current P O C D with these different topic areas at the very beginning, and it kind of outlined or had specific bullets under each one. So wondering what the committee thinks about, you know, the format that would be most useful to be able to figure out what people think of the town moving forward, because the challenge is, again, coming up with a comprehensive vision that tries to represent everyone.
When I was walking through the various tiers of this, we had at the beginning of the 10-year vision, and then you have goals, and then there are the tasks and all of those parts. I started to grapple with, is the 10-year vision an input or an output? You know, and I think the same thing here, that the 10-year vision is almost what are we hearing? You know, what is the summary in some ways of what Granby wants? And so that it seems that maybe that could almost be the summarization of some of the work that's done, either with the stickies or with something else. But as even in the plan, you know, if I looked at that and I said, well, gee, how do you use this as an input? It really is, what did we hear? And what did people tell us? And then we have to make sure that's reflected. So maybe seeing how that fits in with the detail work rather than coming at the beginning, maybe it sort of is the summarization end product, or it could be.
I'm concerned about formulating it as, in an ideal world, what would Granby be like in the future? Because I think a lot of people in town really don't understand how little land is left to make changes. There are certainly a few big parcels in Kent, I'm sure you can tell us exactly where they are, that could still be developed. But in terms of really becoming an Avon or a Southington, I don't think that's what most people who live here want, but that's not really possible anyway, given the open space that's already in preservation, given the fact, you know, given the zoning regulations, although I know we can recommend changes to those. So I'm concerned about getting in, I'm worried that that question will elicit input that really isn't useful because it's going to propose things that, well, that's really not possible anymore. That's not something that could happen.
It might even be at the table level when that's set up, you know, with Granby's limited amount of development space, what, you know, how can that best be used?
Yeah.
And then you don't have, you've sort of pre-addressed that argument, and then that comes back into the summary of what people want.
That's kind of more what I'm thinking. That's a good, that's a good idea. I just think we don't want it to be too open-ended because there are plenty, there are things that are just not on the table, and we don't need to hear that. You know, I would like this, I would like this to be more like Southington with, you know, four-lane roads this way and that way. That's really not, A, we don't control that, that's the state that controls that, and B, I just don't think it's going to happen, given what our development already looks like. So I think we should focus the question, this question on the vision for the future should be about the different visions that are possible, not things that just could happen.
Another, alternative is probably too strong, but as we said, as you said, I think they come, they come right out of the front pages of the P O C D. With another way to do this, again, given that there's only, well, nine months and the limited time we talked about last time, is there a way to even focus it more on, well, this is essentially what we said 10 years ago, do you believe it still captures, or do you want to add something new? And having said that, you know, because I guess when I read this document, I go, this is a great document. You know, it's like, oh, okay, we didn't get to everything, we did some things, we didn't do others, but not arguing that, but it's like, oh, okay, so in terms of statement of values and whatnot, there's, there's some really good paragraphs here. And so is there a way to say, are we looking to continue most of this? I personally suspect so. Are we looking to modify it? Might be another way to steer and narrow, narrow the focus a little on the deliverable, maybe?
When I look through the document and sort of made lists of things, there are 125 goals, you know, when you go through and get all the goals from each of the individual parts. And part of what I was thinking is, I might think through how I would look at it, is just looking at each goal, you say, keep it wrong, done, doesn't make any sense, needs to be modified, change, add, you know. So I think, following your thought, that, you know, really, that's almost the clarification of those goals, because the goals pretty clearly define most of the things that, you know, we might hear. And the goals out of 2016 could almost be on the flip charts at the beginning and say, hey, this is what 10 years ago looked like, what's 10 years in the future look like from now? Do we keep these? Do they change?
Reinforce new direction.
And that's almost, you could almost do your little green stickies at the goal level, perhaps, if, if the goals, when we look at the goals, if the goals still make sense.
I think we're looking for, to cast a little bit broader, not that that, particularly since when I read this document, I think about several things that have changed. One is the composition of housing in town with the two big apartment complexes that have been built since this was written. That's a substantial difference in where we were then. The other big change I see in where the town was when this was written and now is that the protected or semi-protected open spaces increased substantially because of, you know, between the land trust, McLean's, McLean's, it's the same size as it always was, but the land trust properties have increased considerably. The status of Holcomb Farm has changed somewhat. So I think some of, you know, some of the goals have been, you know, some of the goals have been met. So I, like, I do want to make sure we don't seek input that just isn't useful because it can't happen. But I also don't want to be too tied to this because I think things have changed in town. So it's, I think the way you've worded this is a nice balance between those two things. Other than in an ideal world, what would Granby be like in the future? Because I think that casts a net into ideas that won't help us.
So maybe for this one, for the workshop, we can structure, we believe that in 10 years, we'll find that, and then have these different topic areas and have the current planning documents right next to it so people, when they fill it out, they can pull in like, oh, I still like that, or no, I don't.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
Maybe that's a good balance, or I want to add this.
Yeah, and you can see some of the things you know already. They need to be discussed, you know, even if they weren't in the 2016 document, just put them on there for stimulating discussions.
I was thinking that rather than asking people to say what they believe Granby will look like in two years, you might get these people who say, I believe that you're going to continue to put these awful apartment buildings up and, you know, get the pessimistic people out there. So are we really trying to get at what people would like it to look like in 10 years?
Yeah, but without saying, in an ideal...
Yeah, without saying, in an ideal world.
Yeah.
Just like Utopia.
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good...
I think the negative tells you something, too, though. Like, we may have built, nothing we can really stop it because zoning is only, somebody buys something, they can do it.
Yeah.
But if they hear, you know, if you're hearing tones of, you know, four-story high-rises of apartments isn't what the tone is, that is feedback, it's just kind of dampened it down, I guess, you know, it's...
Well, I think you could definitely prevent any grotesque expansion of tall buildings, apartment complexes by the Plan of Conservation Development document. Even if it was zoned, I think you could fight, push back with it because it goes against the P O C D.
Agreed, yeah.
As strong as this document can be, that represents the general goals of the public here, the better it is. It is a, it is a powerful tool when we're on planning and zoning.
And we do refer to it.
Yeah.
In our planning and zoning meetings, when people are applying for permits, we do make reference to the current, the planning, the Plan of Conservation Development currently in effect, and I assume we'll continue to do that with the one that this committee's going to produce. So I think that's a good point.
So, okay, so for this one, we'll change it to, we would like that in 10 years, we will find that, and then the different subject areas.
Yeah, I think that's a good, great template.
Okay.
I do like the idea of the kind of 125 or some themes, like, housing looks like this, or giving them, I get the open-endedness and let them, but I do agree that it might be a data dump that's...
Yeah.
Got a lot of stuff in it that's just not going to be that. We just will give them some context, like, what does housing look like? What is...
Yeah, so I guess related to that, so associated with most of the tables, there'll be a data sheet, if you will, so that corresponds, so people can see, you know, on the housing topic, for instance, here's Granby, here are the residential zones in town, you know, this is the, this is what we currently have in terms of unit count types, occupancy status, affordability, so just like a quick back sheet to help, I think, put things into context, too. So this is, hopefully, can be referenced, or at least, again, provide some perspective as to what the data says about Granby on these different topics as people move through the different tables. And we can go through these in more detail after because I also want input and ideas on, you know, what is missing, and just, yeah, some additional guidance as to what would be helpful. Okay. So C, how do you feel about Granby today and town priorities? So one, please select the statement that best represents your thoughts about Granby. So again, trying to gauge, you know, how people feel.
I think the first one will win.
I do, too. But I still think it's, but then it's, but that's, that's actually helpful, too, having that information, which it comes out that way, and I think you're probably right, that that would be helpful. But I think it's, it's important for that. What I liked about what you did here is it does kind of focus the public on what our job is. So if the, if it's, you know, 75% say, I like Granby now, keep it, that's useful information. And then I thought the, the breakouts also were good because it focuses people on different areas, more of this, less of this.
And these will feed into the online survey?
Yes, so that's, yeah, so this is clearly geared more towards the online. So if we want this in-house at the workshop, how do you see this? Should it literally just be a survey sheet and then we're manually inputting the data in? I mean, I think it's good to collect from people who are at the workshop, so I don't want to omit it, but trying to think about the format for this, for the in-person.
I like the idea of having them submit the survey sheets because otherwise it seems like the input was on different tracks, and so it's not really apples to apples. That's how, kind of how I was thinking about that. And I would say, select up to five.
Hmm.
Because that also helps us, Gabe, like, if a bunch of people only pick, like, a couple of things, and they're the same couple of things, that tells us that, wow, this is really, a lot of people care about this one. So I could imagine somebody saying, well, what really matters to me is rural housing, so I'm going to put that as my one, as opposed to, well, you know, more like spreading it out.
Right.
So I like, and I like limiting it to five because we don't, otherwise, somebody checks everything, and it's not helpful at all.
Right.
But...
And they don't have to make any decisions, though.
Right, but I think saying up to five also helps us gauge the relative strength of the different kinds of concerns that people have.
Do you want people to rank them?
Oh, I hadn't thought of that. That's an interesting idea.
Rank them, then you, like, number one...
That's even more information.
Right. What's the most important to you?
Yeah, then you're getting two contexts.
Yeah, I like, I like that. And it's not, it's not that hard because it's not 50 items here, so, no, I think ranking them's a good idea.
All right. Make that change. And then number four, what do you think are the top issues facing Granby? So this is open-ended. I wasn't sure if this question is captured by the above two questions, or if we could get something different out of responses to this. So I was torn, so I kept it in here to get feedback.
It would be fun to be standing by that big board and watching the person write down those things.
Well, what I, what I liked about this was that, I mean, we don't want people to feel like we're totally channeling them. I mean, we are because that's the only way we're going to get useful information, but this way, if somebody wants to say something way outside the box, at least we've given them a place to do it.
But how many said other in the other two?
True, that's a good point.
Unless they've got five and then other was not on the list, they wanted to be, yeah.
Yeah, maybe pull other out of the list and then just have a question, are there other things that weren't listed that you think are vitally important? And then that other kind of, it's both sides of it.
And go the other way, add a question that says what shouldn't, what things weren't on the list that maybe you maybe should focus on, let's...
Or more. I think...
Well, yeah, have one more and one less, or have one question and let's both.
Okay, wait, so help me with that one?
So, so what they're suggesting is, as I understood it is, instead of having other, say, other, are there issues not listed...
Okay.
That you believe we should focus more on?
Got it.
Same question for less.
Others we should focus less on.
Yep, okay.
And then we don't do four, because that...
So take 04. Okay, perfect. All right. Any other questions you think would be helpful to ask to kind of get at the visions, the community statement, the priorities? Anything that's overlooked here so far?
I didn't think so. I feel like we need, we could almost hone the topics more, either ask more questions, more different questions, or hone, you know, sort of narrow it down. Because I envision that we'll have at least one more session. I think if we, if we put too much into it, it's going to be too much for us to process, and also people will just say, oh, this is, I was, I thought I was just going to come and give my opinion, this is just too much for me, I don't want to do this, be done, I'm leaving.
All right, so moving on to section two. So this gets into the, the different topic areas in the plan. So the first one is housing. So thinking about future housing needs for yourself and other members of your family in Granby, please tell us which of the following is most likely to be the next housing unit? Answer for both yourself and other family members. And then there are all the choices, small, single-family home, large, single-family home, accessory dwelling unit, duplex, town home, multifamily, age-restricted, assisted living, affordable housing, unsure, no change, anticipated, or other.
The only question I had on this one is, should we include skilled nursing or not?
And the whole C C R C concept, too.
C C R C?
Independent living, moving to assisted living, moving to nursing.
Step down.
Gotcha.
And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm just asking, should we? We do, we know we have an aging population, so...
I stumbled a bit over just having assisted living and not having...
That's kind of where I got, I was thinking of a specific person who doesn't live in town, but is a good friend of ours who's kind of in that place.
And even independent living slash assisted living slash, you know, skilled nursing.
Yeah, putting it all in one line.
Yeah, maybe that's the way to go.
Okay. So modify the assisted living one to incorporate the other two. Okay.
I'm just wondering if we can clarify, tell us which of the following is most likely to be the next housing unit? I think if we can clarify it by saying that your, that your family will be looking for, I just thought that the way it was worded was somewhat unclear as to what you were trying to get at.
Direction, like, how do you direct, like, which of the following...
Is it really next because if somebody's planning and staying in their single-family home?
Right.
That's interesting to know.
Well, but that's covered by no change in housing type example.
Okay, but we don't know what that housing type...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Which of the following type of housing that's you or your family, a land too...
Might need.
Might need is good.
Check need is...
Might need is good.
Adding that question, what's your current housing's situation?
Hmm.
So you know the starting point.
That's, yeah.
Are they switching or are they not switching?
That makes, yeah, that's a, that should be in there, that's, that's useful.
So then you have the statistic of percentage of change.
Yeah.
So do you think that should just be a blank fill in, or should we pull, like, have the same list, so it's the same options?
Are you talking about the online survey or both?
Well, we're trying to keep them the same as much as we can.
Yeah, I would say keep them the same and just let people highlight whatever the, what are going to be.
Current, anticipated, or...
But the dropdown would be easier for people to fill out, and you've got a standard structured data.
All right, so we'll do, all right, so add a question about your current housing type, same list, and then keep the current with the modified language, which type of the following housing units?
Yeah, just from a data, just from a data perspective, the more structured data you have, the easier it is going to be to analyze this on the backside. More open-ended questions, the more input we're going to have to deduce what they were thinking to classify and then the classification.
Yeah, the more standardized we can make it.
Make sense, okay. Okay.
The housing sites. Is it... Is your data set fairly easy to put? Like, some of these bar charts, for example, single-family home. There's a very specific percentage here. Do we have the very specifics percentage from 10 years ago? And if we did, is it easy to put those bars right next to it? To see how things might have changed?
Yep. I can look for that. To be honest, I was locked out of the Census Bureau because of the shutdown. So, I had to rely on data that was present on other sites because I didn't have direct access. So, assuming I can find that currently on other sites in the meantime.
In some areas, it would just like, you know, whether it's affordable housing or housing type. I mean, if it was available, it would be great to add. Gosh, if we take a date and track down the data, you know, suggestion withdrawn.
Well, the other concern I have is we don't want to make these charts so busy that people won't look at them. So, that's... If we do, if you do find that, I'd want to get your opinion about what it looked like. I mean, if it's... My own personal view is that the more cluttered something is, the less deeply people look at it.
Really, this question is the fundamental question about housing. What do you want over the next 10 years? I mean, that's...
And do you think it can be imagined?
Find it, right.
Yeah. So, I think those questions for the workshop would just mirror the online survey. Just have a sheet that people could complete and leave. And then...
And number two, at least, does the 10-year fit in there somewhere? So that, you know, you or your family over the next 10-year, next 10-year future? But something just, you know, because a future could be one year and some are a lot. Yeah, right.
That makes sense.
Helps people understand that we're not looking just at tomorrow.
Honestly, we'll probably all need future housing. That's good.
Absolutely. Hence, assisted living and independent living.
All right. And then, three. And I think this will be kind of help illustrate perhaps the land that we do have available. So, if you think your future housing needs can't be met in Granby, what housing is needed and where would it be constructed? So, leave this as just an open-ended. People could highlight. I think it'd just be interesting to see what people think.
That's sort of hard online, but you could at least have a fill-in blank there.
Yeah.
Now, would you envision that that map would show what the zoning is?
Yeah. Or maybe have them side by side so it doesn't get... Yeah, I have to think about how to display that. But certainly, the zoning available. So, people have a reference.
Do you think they're able to answer this question?
I don't know.
It'd be helpful, number three, to list all the different housing options.
I would think...
Future housing needs.
Yeah, to me, it's... Is it inside of Granby, inside of Connecticut, inside of the Northeast? You know, outside the country?
We're really... Our job is really Granby.
Understood. But it gives you... I mean, inside of Granby, outside of Granby, gives you that answer then. You know, how many plan to stay versus how many plan to go? You know, looking at the... I was looking at the population chart. First off, does anybody know what happened in 2019 and 2020? Population dropped significantly, although that coincides with COVID, I guess. But it's... There's a substantial drop. But anyway, just wondering if that's...
A lot of people did a fill-out in Census in 2020. I think that's really big.
That could be, too, I suppose.
Are there broad sort of nexuses of where different... I mean, north Granby, west Granby, Granby, Granby Center? I mean, is there... Are there broader swaths rather than somebody saying, gee, on my street? Or, you know, down the road? But to get some... So, what are we looking for here that's going to help us write something up that helps guide people for the next 10 years?
Or is it as simple as town center and other? I mean, probably more complex than that.
Yeah. Town center versus a more rural area?
Well, but there's still... I mean, there's still R2A versus R50, which are two very different zones. So, I would want to see that separated out.
Most development is developers coming to us with a plan. They don't come and say, what do the people in town want?
Well, but going back to a point that Brennan made earlier, helping us decide whether to say yes or no when they're asking for a special permit, when we can say, well, we did... We had this committee. They did all this work. This is what the people in town want. What you're proposing doesn't fit with it. Makes it... It can inform the Planning and Zoning Commission's decisions about what to approve and what not to approve.
But you have zoning. You have regulations. So, what kind of housing would somebody come that we say we're not interested in?
Well, for example, I mean, and this is leaving the whole affordable housing piece out of it. If you want to put more homes on a piece of property than our zoning regulations would allow, you have to get a special permit. So, we would inform our special permit conversation. Well, Planning and Conservation Development said that, you know, the town's really looking for this. You don't fit with that, so we're not going to give you the special permit. That's kind of how I'm thinking about it. Because we do... We talk about the current plan a lot. And it's part of our conversations a lot on planning and zoning when somebody's looking for a special permit. Whether it fits with the plan. And it's actually, I think it's one of the factors we're supposed to consider for special permits. Does it, you know, does it further the goals envisioned by the Plan of Conservation Development?
I think, sorry, part of it, too, is when we think about new regulations or changes to the zoning regulations. So, for instance, if it were to think about or contemplate different types of housing, what zone would that be appropriate in and where? And then can we look back in the P O C D and see, you know, what was said about that? So, forming kind of the foundation of any regulation changes.
I just think in general, when you're asking people what they would like to see, we don't have the power to produce that. We just take applications as they come and regulate. But as this committee and the town itself can't produce the things that people say they want.
No, but we can say no to the things that people say they don't.
Right. We can say no, but we can't say, yes, we're going to do that in the next 10 years. Because with development, it really... There has to be investors. There has to be people coming to us and wanting to do that. For years, people said, what does Granby need? And they, you know, they came up with ideas of what we need. But unless somebody comes and says, I want to do that business here just because we all agree that's what we need, that doesn't get us that.
It seems to me that with the first question, you know, if somebody said, what are you looking for? And they said assisted living. And then the next question, they said, do you think you're going to have it? No. Well, those two, we already know that somebody wants assisted living, you know? So, that's almost, we don't have to ask them, if you don't have it, what do you want? Because they already told us what they want. We don't know where. But they don't know where, probably, you know, where somebody's going to build something.
So, you're really questioning whether it's worthwhile asking.
Yeah. I think that we can almost solve that same, you know, data question from the ones above it. You know, if somebody, you know, says, multifamily apartments or condominiums, do you think your family's out? Do you think you can find it? No. Well, then we know that there's a demand or an interest in that particular kind of thing. We don't know where, but we do know what.
So, I actually think there's a slight difference between one and two, though. Because if someone says, you know, I think I'm going to need multifamily. And they, do you think your needs can be met here? And they say yes, then I think that's telling. You know, they're sending a signal that they think that there's enough multifamily that their needs will be met. But if someone says, we're going to need multifamily, do you think they can be met here? And the person says no, then I think it's sending a signal that perhaps more multifamily is needed.
Yes. No, I absolutely agree with that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think there's... I think both of those should remain. But to the point about three, if we're just going to stick with the current land use, you know, the zoning regulations and the current land use map, then if we don't want to open it up to see if people are, you know, would consider other areas, then maybe we shouldn't put three in there.
So, at the risk of trying to propose a solution, but I just want to say like three sentences because it'd be a little... So, hopefully, a former school building site will become senior housing. Hopefully, not too many years down the road. I guess that process is working its way through or the agreement? Okay. Okay. So, if that happens, that is something that people have asked for. In theory, I guess, you know, maybe not. But are there other properties that town would consider looking at approaching somebody? There's probably not another logical piece of property in town that the town owns yet, but you could have the dialogue with a private landowner probably somewhere in the core to say, would we look for another one of these projects if there was a high demand for it? Now, okay, maybe that's too far of a, you know, bridge to cross. But just listening to this is what comes to mind.
I think where... Maybe the question is, where would it be constructed? The problem with that is the people really don't know. They might think, you know, for example, they might think, well, I should go there. Well, there's really good reasons why. I can't go there. It's wetlands or it's...
You know those... I wouldn't know those answers, you know? Somebody said, gee, where could you build something like this? Like, you know, I wouldn't... I know where I might like it. But they say, hey, yeah, West Granby. Why not? You know?
So, I think that's kind of what people don't know.
Right.
What's possible. So, why ask them? We're going to get a lot of answers that don't work.
Private party has land that something could be built on. We, as a group, agrees that's what we should do. Stop the private party to be willing to sell it and a developer to be willing to buy it at a price and invest risk. So, I mean, so much of these things, we don't have that much control of. It's not like we can give people what they... We're not politicians that can promise things here. We are trying to guide the town in a direction that will be better 10 years from now than it is now.
So, you're getting too detailed, is really... That question is just too detailed for what you have.
That makes sense.
All right. So, we will get rid of three. Four. What concerns, if any, do you have about new housing development in Granby? So, just provides a list of options for people to choose from.
Should we just run it again to five and rank it?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. The more uniform it is, the better. I'm getting that. This is kind of your field, and that's the sense I'm getting. And it makes sense to me.
Just a...
The ranking kind of does force people. If they don't have any concerns, you know, if they say, yeah, no, I'm... You know, that's like the no concerns. And then I'd have to put down additional traffic. And well, that kind of teases it out a little bit, but...
And you can explicitly put that answer so that you know that's what they answered rather than they skipped it or just didn't bother or whatever.
Right.
And make it a required question.
If you have concerns, which of the following? Rank the following equivalent.
Is there anything that needs to be added to that list? Or removed, changed?
Well, should taxes be on that? Impact, tax impact of these other... Of new housing development. Should that be something we allow people to weigh in on?
I would almost think taxes is a benefit.
No, no, it is. Oh, I see what you're saying. So, maybe don't make it a concern.
Is it tax burden? I mean, I guess.
I guess, and forgive me, this is a question. It's like, you know, new housing. It's not a given that new housing is going to generate net income for the town. Lots of types of housing generate cost for the town. So...
And that does... I feel like that comes up in our some bar meetings.
So, do we want to put taxes?
Or should we not? Is that just going to invite a lot of angry stuff we can't do anything about?
Well, angry or reality? Real estate taxes are very high. I've got to believe, you know, they are what they are. And... Yeah, I guess. Yeah, is there a way to comment on? The... Or God, I would imagine it is fully within the scope of a document like this to try to guide on development that does not place undue burden on the town and taxpayer.
Does that come up later in one of the other questions about taxes?
So, it comes up with the commercial development priorities for commercial development. Because the current P O C D does talk about diversifying the town's tax base. But that's usually in relation, right, to increasing commercial and industrial opportunities to offset the market.
My comment was about residential. Just that... I'm imagining most of the type of development that's... I haven't looked at the final plan. I haven't been involved in the town center things since the last workshop. But if most of that was higher density along existing streets, existing sewers, city services, town services, that's the kind of development that's financially easily incremental revenue for the town. Whereas other types of development would wind up increasing the tax burden.
Well, yeah, high-density development like the Y M C area, 500, 600 units to go in that area, that would be a burden on the tax, on the school system, which would be a burden on the residential taxes. So...
It's a complex equation.
Right.
Yeah. But it's... Boy, it's one of the biggest things that a small town deals with is which side of the net income does... Income and expense is put on the top.
But isn't some of this captured by impacts to the school system and impacts to other town services? You know, if more town services are required, then what follows is possibly higher taxes.
Yeah. And that is a less loaded way to ask the question. So, maybe we do.
I don't know. Is anyone can draw a straight line from development to tax burden?
The people who come to speak to planning and zoning, who have a new project in front of a straw, it's fine. Like it or not.
It's the other 90% I'd be concerned about.
They're not going to read this.
Well, it's interesting to me that we have now examples on the books of these types of projects. Pretty easy to look at, see, are they generating? Are they cash positive or negative? Some of these high-density units, if we put as many streets in town with 10 or 12 houses on each street, we'd have to have subdivided 20 pieces of land to put in streets to house as many people as are in these high densities. So, as a... Street maintenance definitely is a cost to the town. But density really isn't, and it's a positive. So, I think it's almost too complicated for the people. I think we deal with their needs and what they want. I don't think you can expect people to understand ramifications of different type of housing and then recommend it based on that. Other than I think people should be aware of what the housing decisions that Planning and Zoning has made and what the impact is. I don't know if there's any place that people can find that out. I know we have a list of the top taxpayers in the town and some of the housing projects.
Well, PM keeps that, too.
Some of those are now in the top taxpayers in the town.
So, maybe just leave it as impacts to the school system and impacts to town services rather than break it up as taxation somewhere. Yeah.
And then the last one, just meant to be very open-ended. Do you have any comments or suggestions regarding housing in Granby? So, just like catch-all and give people an opportunity to find on whatever they want. Any other items under housing that I covered? Other questions that would be helpful?
I don't think so. I don't know.
All right, so looking...
Is there any housing that you have no control over that can come to Granby?
An 830G application.
Should that be a part of this?
I think it should not, only because it will look, if it's, if what we get on the 830G question is a bunch of really negative comments that could be used against us if we decide to challenge an 830G. We, you know, we were looking, it was looking like that's where we were headed last summer. I don't, we don't want to be on the record as, oh, the town hates 830G and so that's why planning and zoning votes against it, that's why B O S votes against it. We don't want to create a record that a developer, an 830G developer can use against us.
What's 830G?
That's the affordable housing, says if you, if you build a development that's 10% or more affordable, most of the town's zoning regulations basically get overlooked.
We do mention affordable housing a couple of times in the housing sections.
Yeah, which is fine, but I don't think we should specifically ask people about 830G. I think we'll get some negative stuff that could come back to hurt us in litigation.
And the level of detail is a little bit different there when you're, you know, these broader brushes.
So we're good to move on to transportation?
Yes.
What is your opinion on the following statements related to roads in Granby? So it's asking strongly agree to strongly disagree. I'll defer to our data person.
That's fine, it's a one to five.
So traffic congestion, traffic speeding, roads are in good condition, roads are safe, it's easy to get across Granby from my home, just having a generic comment section.
The only suggestion is typically when you add neutral, people will gravitate to neutral. Make them choose one to four.
Okay.
So take neutral out.
Right.
That's really interesting. Makes sense, but I wouldn't have thought of it.
Force them to try here. Force them to commit one way or the other.
It's easy to get across Granby from my home. What about to get from Granby to where I work? I mean, that's, that's sort of the other boundary, you know, out between Granby and the rest of the world.
Well, except that we really, once they leave Granby...
No, I was thinking that just bus transportation, things like that, that, you know, or commuter parking or any of the things that are helping to facilitate people to move in and out.
I read this as being more specific to auto traffic, maybe I'm wrong about that?
I do have public transit covered down, but we could look at, yeah, making sure we cover that in more detail, too. Yeah, because that's right, to Chris's point, this is more getting out the road infrastructure itself or issues with roads. And then two, what is your opinion on the following statements related to pedestrian and bicycle transportation options? There adequate bike and pet transportation options, more sidewalks are needed, more bike lanes and facilities are needed, more trails are needed, I feel safe walking, I feel safe biking, and then comment.
And that's the same one to the ranking?
Yep. Yeah, removing neutral. And then, so this has some questions about public transit, but I don't know, we might wanna have a separate question for that. So three, what type of transportation improvements are needed in Granby? Continued road paving and reconstruction efforts, reduction of traffic congestion, improvement of intersections, traffic calming measures, sidewalks and crosswalks, public transit options, improved C T transit bus stops, bike paths or lanes, not sure, other, and none of the above.
Should we include other traffic calming measures and speed homes? Might be the most...
Rotary is an example.
Rotary or those extensions on the corners that...
Yeah, the bump outs.
Yeah. Whatever those things are described as in...
Are these also of course choice, I mean, multiple places? Where are these?
That's a good point. Do we want people to rank these similar to the others?
I was thinking the one to five.
Okay.
Although you've got none of the above and not sure in there, so if you're gonna rank one to five, say...
That's there.
Have some sort of, in the drive, I assume again it's a trap, well, you're going one to five. If they don't, you know, choose not to answer, I wouldn't give them not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's right, it doesn't really get, provide us with anything that we can use.
No, it's nothing more than not sure.
So can you even mention commuter bus stops or commuter parking? Should we combine that with bus stops or have it as a distinct?
Or even public transit slash commuter options or something like, I mean, at least...
I mean, there's, as far as I know, there's really only one place to catch a bus to Hartford in town, right? It's at the north, yeah, First Church, that's it.
Actually, it's only by the Rover's parking lot, 120.
Okay.
I was wondering if it moved or if there's no...
No, so, yeah, that's the one commuter, but then the bus does stop, so there's no parking, but it does stop at different handful of...
Oh, I gotcha.
Yeah. Actually, in front of your house, Bill.
My wife takes the bus.
I was gonna ask you to comment about busing.
Yeah. She likes it.
Well, the Rover's parking lot does have a commuter bus.
They've got now size for commuter bases.
Start early, certainly.
Trying to remember where I first saw them. I know there's a bus that pulls in there and stops in the middle.
Must be early and...
About a year ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was unaware of that.
Seven o'clock.
Six, that's great. The only problem, there's no stop right in the center of town.
I know, that's why...
Probably no place for the bus to pull over.
Yeah.
Now, we're gonna be able to tease this out either on the flip charts or in the, I mean, because, you know, the public transportation might be an area that one more question or something might be worth, might be useful on.
Well, it's not getting into too much detail for this committee, because at that point you're now getting into the logistics of where and when and how.
Okay.
So just give me more or it's good enough.
Right.
So I will say too, as part of the Granby Center study, there is a recommendation to look at the, a bus stop in the center closer to the town grid, now whether or not that's realistic, but at least it's acknowledged, so something like that could get pulled into this P O C D.
Do you know how many Simsbury has?
No.
I have a lot.
I have a lot. Simsbury is significantly larger than Rutherford, and it certainly have a larger population.
They're not larger geographically, I don't think. I think we actually are, but they, there is, it is a larger population.
Are they closer to 20?
Yeah, 20, I would say 25, might be a little more.
So that's 15,000 more people?
Right, they're more than twice our size in terms of population.
So put something on this side of Simsbury.
Just because you wrote it down there, more bike lanes and facilities, I was trying to think of in Granby, is there any like official, official access to the rail trail? There really isn't in Granby.
Yeah, well, no, it's East Granby, I guess.
It's all East Granby, right?
Yeah, the only spot is down by, um, freshies.
Freshies.
Yeah, there's kind of like the informal parking.
Right, informal, that's where I was going at.
Yeah.
We need a formal parking right in, they are on Floyd Hill Road somewhere.
Yes.
That would hold 30 cars, you know?
Yeah, because that is the only place, that is literally the only place you can access rail trail in, that's, that's right, that's the only place in Granby.
Then you'd have potential conflict, someone getting hit.
Different town.
Well, it's all, well, most, all the big lots that we have probably, those of us who use the rail trail, use our East Granby and suffer.
Worked down in Simsbury.
Yeah.
So four, do you have any comments or suggestions regarding transportation? So again, just to open, share what they want. So for the transportation table, I was thinking about having several different maps, so one would be an area of the Granby Center in more detail, so people could mark, you know, where they think sidewalks should be, identify any locations for specific transportation improvements, bike racks, et cetera.
Rotarys. I'm an advocate, I like, I like how they use it in Ireland.
Look at Carmel, Indiana, they've got like 150 of them, they've proven the safety data, they've proven the efficiency, the fuel efficiency, it's amazing, sorry.
No, I completely, I'm completely an advocate of it. If the traffic doesn't stop, you go around, I know this town did not like the one put in, but...
Are we sure about that?
What's that? They didn't like it when it went in, now...
Are we sure about that or did a few people make enough noise to make it sound like...
Oh, rotary.
That's really...
But I tell you, traveling, traveling East Street to Notch Road is so much easier to...
Oh, yeah.
And then, Brandon, to your point to having an overall town map where people could show other locations for sidewalks, trails, bike facilities such as parking and mark that up so we could capture all that. And then similar to that, I think it'd be helpful to have one with specific intersections or roads that need to be improved. And oftentimes, when we look for grant funding, it's helpful if we actually have specific things mentioned in the P O C D, so I think this one is really important to call out locations that could need improvement. Any other thoughts or suggestions about transportation?
Yeah, I think it was good.
Are there, are there known, this is probably a loaded question, are there known intersections that people could, you know, throw out as ideas, like we can prompt as ideas rather than just, you know, somebody's trying to think of an intersection in town, I can think of Day Street 189.
That's what I was gonna say.
Day Street and Route 20. You can think of Bushy Hill and, you know, Route 20.
Yep.
Simsbury, Rose in Route 20 is really dangerous.
Oh, yeah, up there.
Yeah, that's really bad.
I hate that intersection.
I avoid it when I can.
And then the other side, you come out and it's a friggin' V, so you're looking back over your shoulder, trying to merge with the notched traffic.
So the intersections are difficult and then I can't tell me how many times I'm driving up the hill on Route 20 and probably going above the speed limit and somebody still comes around me on the double white lines. Is there a statement, is there a traffic safety statement? A speeding enforcement statement?
These are also state rules, so I, yeah, very limited.
They do, there is something to hear about speeding.
We really don't have any jurisdiction on them.
I saw it somewhere.
So, sorry, so the jurisdictions, so like, we don't, we don't cite speeders on state roads? Is it, it's...
We can't, we don't have any ability to change the state roads.
Right, I guess my comment was an enforcement currently. Is it, is there, is it suggesting, is suggesting greater enforcement?
Yeah, so one, I mean, one of the questions is, traffic speeding is an issue, so I think if we get a lot of folks saying strongly agree with this, you know, that can get pulled into the plan and...
Yeah, as opposed to saying something the police might take as criticizing, which we probably don't want to do.
Trying to up the revenue for the town, let's go.
There we go, I like that positive thing.
I hear there's some small towns with very profitable speed cameras.
Oh, they're just, just, Grandville, they don't even need cameras, they've got that guy, he's the most aggressive ticketer I've ever encountered in my life.
It's not if it's going fast enough or not.
Sergeant Gung Ho, I call him.
Sergeant Gung Ho. I wouldn't know, I guess I haven't sped enough in his, in his lap.
Try tomorrow.
I don't recommend it.
Is he a civilian or?
No, no, he's a, he's a cop.
Oh, oh.
He's a, he's a grandville cop. He's the one with the pickup truck, in case you're keeping your eyes open.
What color is it?
Yeah, typical police, dark navy color.
Does he know you by your first name?
Fortunately, it hasn't gotten quite that bad.
All right, economic development.
Are these also going to be the four choices, I mean, ranked choices or one, two, three, prioritizing here, we're sort of changing the motif a little bit.
Because there are only three items.
Yeah, so...
No, but for each one, goods or services strongly disagree, I don't, I don't care about that, or yeah, that's, that's where I want to put mine.
So we're giving one to three on each of the three?
No, I was just, right now it's just...
Yeah.
Rank them, right?
Yeah, so similar to how we did like the one to fives ranked, but I see your point. Right, we're switching between ranking and agree strongly, disagree neutral. I thought this one was good to rank because it's like the top priority of what people want or should be driving.
Some tests, see if you're awake.
No, I think ranking is is good because it, it sends the message that we can't do everything, so what, what is most important to you of these three?
Are there any other considerations that should be added? There's only three.
Is there something there to be said for alignment with town values and... Theme, I'm thinking, not the right word, but I, you know, I always think of farm to table, I always think of farming town, is there something about that kind of...
Like branding?
What's that? Brand, yeah, branding or theme or...
It advances the town of Granby.
I would put, I mean, I would interpret that to be under the goods and services if it's specific or aligned, but if, if there's better language or if you want like that specific...
I think that's almost too specific. Okay, yeah, I think it's good.
These are all positives, like, you know. I've been at meetings where a large business wanted to come in and people had a lot of negative things to say about what that business was gonna do to town. I think sticking with positives is a good idea, but...
Well, that's where the agree, disagree comes in, you know, you get jobs, I don't want anybody else working in town because we already got enough people working in town, so I disagree with the job, you know, or tax revenue, who knows?
Are we okay with one?
Yeah.
Okay. So two, if, if Granby wanted to support additional economic development, would you support expansion of business zones or intensification of business uses in the following areas? So this, again, it's bolted out, but it'll have a map for the workshop that corresponds with this, so folks can see the, the different commercially zoned areas of town and identify where they think, you know, commercial economic development should be directed.
Suggestion would be the strong agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, rather than yes, no, unsure.
Okay.
Keep the fourth uniform.
Can I ask just sort of a peripheral question? Is there, like, we've got North Granby area here, is there a West Granby area? Not, not at the present time, over the next 10 years?
The way it's zoned, there's just nothing.
There's nothing in West Granby at all, but, okay.
Used to be our industrial zone.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, all the, all you could really see going into West Granby is conceivably a farm store.
Okay, all right.
I mean, obviously the Samuel Brook Street is, is the, is the hot one, but...
Schools, that's high school.
That little area, that little area in North Granby on 89, there, there is some room for some commercial stuff there. It's all...
There's some room for enforcement up there, too.
For what?
There's some room for enforcement up there, too.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you.
Which one?
Lawn morgue.
Yeah, the law morgue, we've been, yeah, we've, the commission has been unhappy with them for some time.
Like she's growing.
Yeah, well, to drop something off, you have to really beg to get it back.
Oh, you've used them?
All right, everything out.
Should we offer other there since there really isn't any other? Those are really all the areas that, without zoning change, those are really the only areas. Is, I mean, is there really anywhere else?
I would, yeah, yeah.
I would think we should take other out because it's really, it's illusory, there really isn't anybody.
Hey, what is none of the, what's the question, sorry, what's the question again?
Well, I guess, yeah, it's, so if Granby wanted to support additional economic development, would you support expansion of business zones or intensification of business uses in the following areas?
Well, if they're agree, disagree, everybody, if you say disagree to everything, that's none of the above.
That's none of the above.
All right, so we'll take that out.
Got those two.
And I do just have to add another zone down at the Simsbury Town Line that I just realized they overlooked, it's a small C two zone down there, so I'll add that up. Where was that, Abby? Where was that? The, it's on the Simsbury Town Line, there's the daycare and then the barber shop and, yeah, just that.
Barber shop's in the third, is it? Is it, is the corn crib in Simsbury or is that in Granby?
Oh, I don't know, the line is like...
Yeah, it's right in there.
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think that's...
It's like Emmons, I think is Simsbury. The corn crib is probably Simsbury.
Yeah, I think corn crib is Simsbury.
Looks like the line goes through one of the property, or the buildings.
If anybody's been around here long enough, it'd probably be Town Line, which is now the Parlor's.
That's it. For Town Line.
I'm real.
I think the daycare center is in both towns, that's why I think they get school buses from both towns.
Ah, okay, that's why, that makes sense.
All right, and then three, if Granby wanted to support additional economic development, would you support the expand, expansion of infrastructure, sewer, water, gas? Yes, no, unsure?
I'd go back to the agree, strongly agree, structure.
And I would, this is one where I think it would actually be good to have a map because I think most people don't know where the water lines are, where the sewer lines are, where the gas lines are.
Yes, and that is, I didn't get to it yet, but yes, I will definitely have that. So do you think it's helpful to break those out into three, like the different infrastructure types or leave them lumped together? Like, is it possible someone would support gas and not water?
Are they all the same, like, if you were to overlay the maps, do they all align? Then I would say three separate maps. Trying to interpret that on a single map would be very hard. Trying to interpret that on a single map would be very hard. Within that question, would you? Is there, is there a way to suggest that there's a positive cost benefit ratio here? You know, like, oh, 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 okay, I mean, the question of whether or not I want to spend $10 million on an infrastructure project really has to do with potential cost benefit and the probabilities I assign to that. So it's, I, I like the question, I'm just wondering, can we give it any more to?
Well, could we say, for example, if Granby wanted to support additional economic, well, I guess it's, I think it's kind of already inherent in the question because you're saying, you're implying that that would be something that would do that. Would enhance, you know, in order, there, there are certain kinds of businesses that we just can't come here and in certain parts, even along the two main, the, the several main roads unless sewer was out further.
How far is the sewer, what about 202?
So Meadowbrook is tied in, but it, it pretty much stops right at the end of Station 280 because Meadowbrook has a private line that's a forced name to get up the hill. So for all intents and purposes, it stops like right by Station 280, Salmon Brook.
So really, not, not in the industrial zone at all?
So you make a cost benefit analysis, you know, what would cost to run it all the way to the end of town? And then you'd, then you'd open up that entire area to a whole different.
And right now, it stops at Windsor Federal, it's the last on, on 189.
Yeah.
And how far does it go?
In the center of town.
So would, so Windsor, yeah, well, that was one of the issues with the A30G that was proposed was.
Thought it worked for us.
In that particular instance, it wasn't a bad thing.
Maybe just the phrasing here, if it supported additional economic development, would you support the expansion of infrastructure, sewer, water, and gas?
That's good, that's good.
I would really question why we were taking it out if it didn't, but okay.
But that's.
Well, but they might not be thinking that.
True, yeah.
Uh, no, that's good, I like that.
I mean, what, why would you add people to it?
I've always wanted, you know, town water.
Oh, I love my bowl. I like my taste.
Till it runs out.
I've grown up with swell water and.
Yeah, but I tell you, I, my office is in the center of Simsbury, I don't even, I don't even like to drink the water there. It's so, tastes like chemicals after drinking Granby water for 20 years, North Granby water for 20 plus years.
All right, so that'll be changed, that if it supported additional economic development, we'll break out sewer, water, gas, strongly agree, agree, disagree.
And show the back.
And that, yep.
So should we use that concept and some other questions? If it, if it supported economic growth, would you be in favor of? Are there other places that we could have kind of directed the question a little bit?
It's back to the balancing act, you know, if this, would you do this, if not?
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where else it fits of the stuff we've discussed so far. I'm just looking back to see. I don't really think it fits with housing. I guess the one thing it would fit with is something we don't have any control over, which is, you know, expanding public transit. But we don't, we really can't, we don't control that, so I don't think it makes sense to phrase it that way. So I think, I think it's good here, but I can't think of anything else. It's a good question, I just see it.
And then four, what do you think some of the challenges are to economic development in Granby? So I'm thinking, do you want to do a rank again, select up to five, one, three, five, okay. So availability of commercial space slash properties, lease rates, cost of land and buildings, municipal regulations such as zoning and permitting process, property taxes, market constraints, transportation slash accessibility, finding and attracting workers, infrastructure, water, sewer, gas, not sure other, and none of the above, so we should probably take out those last three.
Yeah. I think we should leave infrastructure though, because it'll be interesting to see if it answers to three and infrastructure here lineup, where people just have a very incoherent notion of what that looks like.
Anything else that folks can think of as a challenge?
We're leaving in other?
No. Do you think you need it?
I'm sure there may be other things that we just haven't thought of.
Sure, but they're ranking it one to five.
Right.
I guess they could write five and then other, what they think.
I think if we say rank one to five and leave other there, they're gonna, it's just too confusing, maybe just allow for comment.
Yeah, comment would be good.
Okay, that way, I don't think people, that's what's confusing.
And then, again, five is just meant to be a catchall, do you have any other ideas? Hmm, I don't know what I said there, for the commercial areas of Granby. Maybe comments or suggestions?
Yeah, that's good.
Do you have any other comments or suggestions? So that's consistent with the rest. Anything else with economic development?
No, I think that's good.
All right. Now, D is a rather large section because I lumped a lot together. So certainly appreciate input and feedback, you know, if things need to get pulled apart, more specific questions about some of these topic areas. So this is the open space agriculture, historic and cultural resources area. So one is supposed to just kind of get a level set of how people think the town is doing. So the town does a good job protecting smart resources, good job protecting open space, good job protecting natural resources, and a good job of protecting farmland. Just trying to get input, and we'll take out neutral.
Yeah.
And then number two is trying to get a sense for how people feel, feel about historic and cultural areas in town. So Granby should, and then this is a strongly agree, agree, we'll take out neutral. Prioritize zoning regulations that protect historic or cultural structures, sites, and neighborhoods. Explore creation of a historic district commission regulations that would require approval for any visible change to a historic building from a public right of way. And better promote or inform the community about its historic and cultural resources.
So with the historic district commission, that would, that would be a town commission? I'm wondering if people think the Salmon Brook Historical Society is already that? So maybe we need to make it clear that it isn't?
That's a good point, maybe like a little. Yes, well, yeah.
I'm not quite sure how to phrase it, I mean, you could say.
Town of Granby Historic.
Yeah, Town of Granby Historic District Commission Regulations. You could say to complement the already existing private, you know, private organizations focused on that or something like that. I just, I have a feeling people don't know that Salmon Brook Historical Society is private. That they probably think it's a town.
Okay, you just put a please note.
Yeah.
Salmon Brook Historical Society is a private organization.
Even better. I like that.
501?
Yeah, 501. I mean, those first two really deal with regulations, you know, would you support more regulations as a resident of the town? Then the third one is a little bit different, that's promoting, that could be done through all kinds of different ways, but.
Yeah.
Right, the other, the first two really are things that the town would have to take legal action to do.
Your town center study must have focused on these first two. Of course. How to handle.
I think the first one definitely, from what I remember.
Yeah.
Obviously not a just, uh, this explicit commission. That's town sanctioned, I don't know, the term you're using.
A point two.
Yeah. Clarification.
Any other questions that we want to cover under this area about historic and cultural?
Is there some question, I know we talked about zoning somewhere earlier in the survey, but is there something about aligning future development in buildings to some sort of? I don't know the term I want to use. Style, format, whatever, that lies to the historical.
Yeah, already have that.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
Wouldn't that bring to the surface like the need for an architectural review group?
Yeah, so.
That's the historic commission, we don't have that now.
So the, yeah.
That would be this, if this got created, that's what that would do.
Right, yeah.
What, I see what you're saying.
The new historic district commission that we're asking people, did they want that? That would do the architectural reviews.
Oh, okay.
That would be one of the things it would do if we had.
Apparently, if somebody has a special permit, you have the option of, some option in terms of the style of the building and the materials.
So there, there are guidelines in the zoning, right? Like, you know, it speaks to placement of the building with lawn between the building and the road, and it should be in the historic nature, like, it's kind of, it's not specific to the degree that historic district regulations would be about materials.
You cannot have that, you cannot have a sign that looks like this, you cannot have.
But could Autozone have put up one of their box stores?
In the historic district? I don't think so.
So by, so by special permit, the commission has the capability to, to work with, with an applicant to, to get a little bit more of what they want.
Everything is by special permit.
But again, there's not like a hard, fast regulation on that.
For number three, do you go back to those district areas? Cause I'm, some of the, offering some areas and of suggestion rather than just being open ended. I don't know if people are gonna be able to, I think of North Granby and the Cossett Library and Allen Cider Mill the original firehouse and that area, all that seems to be targeted for preservation.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good question, how to do that.
I mean, you got West Granby and that historic center.
Yeah, so.
North Granby Historic Center.
What I was planning for this table is have on one of the boards a map of town and show the nationally designated historic districts and then some of the properties outside of those that are designated on the National Register of Historic Leases. So people can see visually where these assets are in town. And so I don't know if we just want to have people put like a sticky next to those areas or if it should be, like, try to.
How you do it online as well.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was saying, if you specify those areas in a dropdown or something like that.
Okay.
Then align to the map you're articulating, I think that makes sense.
Okay. Are we okay with three then?
Yeah.
Okay. Four, do you support the acquisition of open space by the town? This is a yes, no, unsure.
I think you could combine four and five with, make it just a, you know, a four, agree, disagree. You know, preserve agricultural land from agree to disagree.
Yeah, maybe just leave unsure out, just make it yes or no. And then if yes, rank the ones that you think are the most important and do it all as one. Just maybe they'll.
Do you want to rank or agree, disagree? I'm kind of getting a sense that a lot of the ranking, because you know, then you gotta remember what number have I already used before and, you know.
In, in this case, I, I think I agree with the agree, disagree, or keep going with the four, strongly agree, agree, so on and so forth. For each of the items.
Thanks.
Ranking, ranking them doesn't.
Give you what?
Yeah, I mean, if you start ranking them, well, then when, when something is out of order, an opportunity, how do you handle it? I've got an opportunity to do, provide hiking, but that was ranked fifth by the public. Well, do we focus on or don't we focus on it?
Preserve wildlife corridors, agree, disagree, I mean, on four, strongly. I think that works for that one.
Okay, so we'll, we'll keep four, do you support the acquisition, yes, no? And then if yes, and then agree, strongly disagree? Is that?
Do you need to have two separate questions? I mean, why not just have them, you know, do you, do you agree, disagree to preserve agricultural lands?
Yeah, I think you could, I think you could word it that way, do you support the acquisition of open spaces by the Town of Granby and then agree, disagree on the items that I listed?
All right, so do, do you support the acquisition of open space? If you support the acquisition of open space, please rank the factors that should be considered?
It's just not even an if then, because if it's a disagree, then they go, you know.
Oh, it does.
Do you support, disagree, I disagree, I don't think we should preserve any additional agricultural land. I'm just trying to see if we can cut a few questions out.
All right, so do you support the acquisition of open space, question mark? Preserve, sorry, I'm really struggling with this one.
Then if, if yes, please rank.
Sorry, what?
We're, we're still looking, we're combining four and five.
Yeah, I think if you just reword the question saying, do you support the acquisition by the Town of Granby on the file, on any of the, please rank or? What are we saying?
Agree, disagree.
Yes, please.
Please note your agreement level of following areas as things to consider as acquisitions by the town for work preservation.
How important are the following?
Yeah, that's a good one, yep.
So when considering the acquisition of open space, how important are the following factors? Agree, strongly disagree?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Are the following factors, okay. Okay, six, what elements of open spaces are important to you? And then this is just a list. Do we want to have people rank this as well?
I think so, I, I just think, I, I, as we've had, been having this conversation, I think in most of these areas, the ranking gives us more information.
All right, so we'll rank one to five.
Because you, other, if you say yes, I, I mean, for me, I would, if I was filling this out and it was just a yes, no, I'd probably say yes to everything but parking.
Which means you, so you have seven, you're going one to five, they're gonna, they're gonna not be able to rank two. Give them one to seven on this particular one?
Or do you just want one to three?
What are your top three priorities?
I like that part for this one.
I think there should be a relationship between the total number and how many you have to pick. If you really want to get what people feel strongly.
So top three?
Well, it's just my, when you only have seven, five seems like too many. And seven seems like people would spend a lot of time trying to figure out what.
What order to put in there?
Which, uh, parking area or ADA accessibility, they feel strongest.
I like, I like one to three for this one, too.
Makes sense.
Okay. So seven, how would you prioritize the fund to support agriculture in Granby? So this is another ranking, but thinking we're probably gonna have to look at that. So tax exemptions slash pro farm tax policies, review zoning regulations and all expansion of allowable uses on farms, town purchase of farmland or development rights, continued lease of town owned property to farmers, study other town owned properties that could be leased, establish a farmer's market or facility for the sale of farm products, other.
I have something, want to know if we should add. So the Agricultural Commission has been working on, like, having the town adopt the right to farm out. And it's something we've already talked to a few boards about and gotten kind of feedback, but then it kind of stalled. I don't know if that's something.
I don't know if that's something we should put here, because that's something that we're working toward. I mean, it just, it just gives the town, you know, makes us look a little bit more agricultural friendly. I mean, it's not, it's nothing that's going to be different from what the state already has, it just, I'm setting it on the town level.
If we're going to add that, I think we probably need at least like a two sentence gloss of what that is, so people will know.
Yeah.
All of these other things are self explanatory, that I think we would need to tell people what that meant, but I don't, I think it's a good idea. It has been something that the town's been working on.
All right, so we'll add right to farm ordinance with a no.
What does a ranking of one to six get us on this?
So.
Rather than agree, disagree kind of concept.
Or, or just one, you know, one, four, four, one to three, like we did with the previous question.
Yeah. Uh, just trying to.
So I guess if we look at when considering the acquisition of open space, how important, perhaps this should be the same structure then? Strongly agree, agree.
Yeah. You know, when you do agree, disagree, or strongly those, I mean, you get a sense of the momentum. You know, if you have a lot, if you have 50% of the people strongly agree and 50% of the people strongly disagree, you know, you've got a stall out issue, you know, and you subtract positive and from the negative support, and that gives you a, a ranking from those, which then you can rank where you have your support. It's a little harder to do if you have them just ranked down, you can put points on them and you can do things, but strongly agree to strongly disagrees is pretty useful in being able to prioritize as well.
All right, so change the structure that we'll add the right to farm ordinance with a no as to what that is. Any other suggestions?
And just remind us, though, that when our commission looked at ordinances, they need to be enforced. That was really the rub for our group, I think, was who's going to be enforcing it. I don't know what your other feedback was, but that was, that was a problem with an ordinance.
I think it's, since it's something that's been part of the town conversation for a while now, I still think it should put it on the radar.
I think it's important, we know that right to farm is something we strongly support. Yeah.
Yeah.
We just have, yeah, note that it's just accepting what the county, state.
Yeah, that's kind of what I meant by then, so that people, they, they don't want to think that it's something we just made up, that your point is it's already other.
Yeah, it's already out there, but it's just. We get to put one of those little key signs on the road.
I think we should at the, at the entrance of town.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll have one when we go into Southwick now.
Eight, Granby should pursue the following sustainability initiatives, and this is strongly agree, agree, take out neutral. Renewable energies, reduce carbon emissions, promote water conservation, promote waste production and recycling, incentivize green buildings, expand community gardens. And I have another, maybe we'll pick out one there.
I don't have any real basis for this, but it, it seemed on this one that I felt almost the need over the next 10 years, you know, because sustainability initiative, it's not something that's, oh, we're going to do this next year. I mean, this is, all of these are long term, and maybe by the time we've reached here, you've forgotten that we're thinking about over the next 10 years, rather than just near term. But I suppose you could say that on everything we've, we've said here, but maybe just remind them every now and then that this is 10 year future with crystal ball gazing.
Yeah, because these are all, most of these would involve building infrastructure that we don't have right now, so I think it is more pointed for this one.
All right, so put over the next 10 years.
Or, or just somewhere in there, just remind them that it's a long term, in the long term or something. I would have forgotten by now that we were looking far into the future.
Are these ranked too, or just agree, disagree?
Yes, that's, yeah, agree, disagree. And so I just want to highlight too, so out of this whole area, there are only two questions on conservation, specific items, and then add. So certainly if folks think of more questions, that would be helpful to ask to get input on. We can definitely look at that. And then just to catch all, do you have any other comments or suggestions about open space, add historic and cultural resources in Granby? All right. And then the last section that we have here is about town services and community facilities. So how would you describe the quality of the following community facilities?
That seems also, because that's almost like rank it or vote on how well it's doing right at this very moment, rather than will, will it meet the needs over the next 10 years? Or something mean, you know, they might love the library or Cossett or the transfer station, but 10 years from now, is it going to do what it needs to do?
Yeah, then you can go to an agree, disagree, and is, will, will the following facilities meet the needs over the next 10 years?
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so will the following?
Does the senior center also need to include youth center? Or youth services?
Yeah, yep, excellent point.
I don't know if most people know that.
So will the following community facilities meet the community needs over the next 10 years?
Plus the fire department.
So.
Other than being a volunteer organization, but.
Right.
It is, there is funding from the town that is.
True. All right, I will add.
Fire and ambulance.
Fire slash ambulance.
I would, I would break those up more because the fire department is volunteer, the ambulance is private.
Okay.
The town doesn't really have as much jurisdiction over the ambulance.
Oh, I let maxed.
It's lost acres of private entity.
Couldn't you tell me that? Text a couple people getting answered.
I, I think it's, I don't think that there are any town, I think it's run by employees, but I think the town pays for it. That's.
Yes, there's a budget offered by the town.
But like even, I don't think even the fire captain is a paid
No, none of it.
person, it's all volunteer, so it's so.
Parks and records is another one.
So question about fire and ambulance. I know the town obviously contributes money and supports, but we also do that with some other entities, like I'm thinking Farmington Valley Health District. So I was thinking this was more geared towards looking at the state of town facilities, like physical buildings and have planning, if the town needs to plan for future changes to accommodate growth or changes, so I'm just not.
Well, with the fire department and that battery thing, there was the discussion about what special equipment was needed in case it ever started to go up.
Yeah, she's talking more facilities.
Right, like the actual, like, buildings.
Not needs.
So maybe separate out services from facilities, maybe have a separate question about services.
Right, services.
All right, so we'll take fire and ambulance out of that, so and then we'll change this to.
Is that what three is?
Yeah, I think we go. So.
Police department come out of that too, right?
Well, isn't that what three, what's three?
Well, that's actually.
Police does have the physical play.
I got you.
Yeah.
So what about firehouses then?
So.
Which way are we going with that?
What are we going to learn from?
The town funds the buildings.
What are we going to learn from it? I mean, if, if you're, if people are worried about fire prevention 10 years from now because we're not going to be, have volunteers, nobody's going to be working in town, you know, and, and so they say, well, you guys are going to have to figure out a whole new way to protect against fires, then, then you've learned something from it at a broad brush level. I was just thinking, maybe you can combine one and three, you know, you, you could separate them into facilities and services, but then the services, you know, dog tags and permits and, you know, zoning applications and, and all that, that's sort of services.
So I agree with number one, that you should limit that, that to the actual facilities, the actual buildings.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about the firehouses. I think the town owns the firehouses.
I don't agree. I don't own any firehouses.
No, I don't think they don't.
I know we don't own the ambulance.
I don't think we own the firehouses either.
The fire department owns the firehouses, so they should come out.
Yeah, so they, so they shouldn't, we shouldn't add the firehouses here. So really the question is, how do we address services, like?
So, yeah.
Fire and ambulance.
Emergency services?
Yeah, that's what, emergency services, that's good.
So before we move on for one, so are we doing, I'm sorry, agree, strong, what are we doing for this one? How will the following, will the following community facilities meet the community needs over the next 10 years, agree, disagree? And just leave it at that?
Strongly agree, disagree.
The four.
Okay.
No, neutral.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we just kind of said that.
Okay, so those four. And then maybe this is kind of out of order, but.
Two probably should go last.
Yeah. So is it going to be lacking any specific community facilities, amenities, or services? So that's supposed to be like a catch out. So going into, do any town services need improvement slash which town services need improvement? So again, this is trying to identify what services are offered that, and how folks feel about them. So thinking about the structure of that question, and then, yeah, what we want to list for those services.
Somebody mentioned emergency services before, should we?
Yeah, I would.
Combine that with public safety or put it as a separate?
Just yeah, parentheses saying fire, police, ambulance.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, I think with public safety, I think it's.
So we don't have a specific service to cover, like the functions of town hall? I don't know.
Well, I mean.
How's it working these days?
Yeah, I think.
All right, there you go.
You all feel for the community.
Well, the only, the only town service I do, well, we did have, we did have a friend who had a serious health issue suddenly at our house, and I have to, I have nothing but great things to say about ambulance. It was a Sunday morning and they were there in minutes. So nothing bad to say about them. The only town service I've myself used recently is the, is the early voting, and that was, I thought, very well organized. I thought the registrars were, you know, were there during their, during their job. The stern lady that told you, you better not vote a second time, did her little spiel. I thought they did.
I don't know if she wouldn't have voted a second time.
No, I, I, I actually did question whether there was anybody who thought they could, but I guess balance suspenders is always a good idea.
Maybe on this, there, there might be a large category, town services, parentheses, you know, permits, licenses, tax questions, tax questions, you know, all the building inspection and permit, I mean, just all that kind of thing, so everything that happens out of the building.
Yeah, this is like the assessment appeal.
Yeah. Just all lumped together, I think.
All right, so we'll do it just said, okay.
Towns, you know.
Town services.
Town services.
Okay.
Also a good question, I don't know.
And we don't have like the, yeah, how it's going to be phrased.
And should that be town hall services?
Yeah.
That's, people, that, people understand that better.
Town hall services. Yeah, so how do we?
Do town hall services need improvement over the next 10 years? Agree, disagree?
Okay. Do any town services need improvement over the next 10 years? And then we'll do the agree situation. And then, yeah, just to catch all, do you have any other comments or suggestions? And then I thought it would be helpful just to collect some information as to who exactly we're getting feedback from. So age, do you live in Granby? How long have you lived here? If you don't live in Granby, and then asking some very basic questions. Do you want to know? Why?
Why are you here?
Why are you still here?
Well, some of our, I mean, some of, yeah, some of our business owners, like I, I think James Chan, for example, lives in Simsbury, he owns what, three or four town businesses?
But I like it because then, I mean, every age group or generation is going to answer the questions differently, so I think that helps us.
Well, and that would be interesting, too, to be able to highlight, that might, that might be something we want to talk about in the report, like, you know, yeah, people between this age and this age have these concerns, older residents had these concerns.
Certainly something we could graphically note.
Yeah.
Your answers, you know, as in your trust score by age group.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you can, can ask it, not even sure if you'd want to, but I, from data perspective, I'd like to know how many kids they have, I mean, or whether they have kids, because that changes their, you know, the library and the schools, and, I mean, that's a whole different thing than retirement, you know. But I'm not sure how that, you know, what you can really do with that.
Or how about like, how many people in your household?
Yeah.
Yeah, that kind of.
Yeah, how many people, yeah, how many people in your household were their ages?
Yeah.
Because I mean, I mean, even if you say how many kids, I mean, some people have grandchildren.
Could you ask if they have children in the school system or will in the next 10 years? I mean.
Yeah.
No, I guess that's good.
There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with asking that.
So we have, how many people live in your household? And then are we asking for ages of them?
Yeah.
Oh, no, just asking.
How many people live there and what ages, what ages are they?
I think that's a good question, is do you have school age kids? That's.
Or does a school age?
Yeah.
Do one or more school age children reside in your house, in your household?
For those that aren't even born yet.
That's right, 10 years could be nine year olds.
Yeah, I was going to say 10 years, they'll be, they'll be third graders.
Yeah, but even if, I mean, you may ask about, you know, school age kids, but also if you have your parents or your in-laws and they're using the senior bus, they're, you know, depending on the.
Or the kids wanting to move back into town.
Yeah, or they're depending on the food services from the senior center and I think it helps to know ages.
So we'll just say how many people live in your household and the ages, because somebody can extrapolate who's old and who's not. Okay.
Not to offer our time more than once, but are we doing more than one open house like rather than Thursday? I thought we talked about a Saturday? Or is that?
I, we hadn't talked specifically about, we are going to do more than one.
Okay.
This isn't going to be the only one. I think we'll actually get, I don't, I hope we'll actually get some useful information from this one, that we'll, we'll either say, we got a lot of information from the people who participated, but not very many people came, so we should basically do the same thing again, or we got really good information on this, let's, let's structure the second, the second open meeting differently, ask different questions.
The only concern there is you know, offer two separate question sets to, to different populations and you can't really combine the.
I think it's going to, well, I think that's a valid point. I think we should wait and see what kind of participation we get at the first meeting and on the survey between now and when we want to have the second meeting and decide from that.
The only thing I would say is the value of the age is, did you have participation in all age groups, where did you believe, or? Have one age group or one, like, you know, just to see if we can target other types of households to participate.
I think, I think we'll have enough. We'll, we'll know at least the ages of the people we got. To me, the thing that I'm really interested, curious about and hopeful for is that we'll get enough participation to get meaningful input that we can use as opposed to it's just the same 20 people who show up for everything.
That's where I think time of day makes a difference, you know.
People. Well, Saturday's good because then.
Exactly.
People who are working.
Daylight, too.
People who've worked all day, every day aren't made just to say, they might even mean to come and say, I don't feel like going out again.
Or the young.
Guilty of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
35 years ago, I stood in front of Geisler's or I guess, and asked people, do we have enough stop signs? Do we have enough, you know, what do, what does Granby need liquor store? What else do they need? Do, you know, what do we have too many of? But, yeah, you know, I mean, some, it may take a little polling, too, if we don't get enough answers.
I, I did ask the, the manager of the gym where I work out if I could put up a flyer telling people about this, and he was happy to do it. So if there, if you have connections with other, you know, local businesses in town that you'd be in a position to ask, can, can we put up a flyer advertising this? Just everything we can do to publicize it in different ways.
Signs out here.
I appreciate if you can have signs out here.
We were going to ask about the, whether we could use that sandwich board, but that was something Mark and Abby and I talked about, because a lot, so many people drive through the center that they'd see that.
And getting on Facebook, on the Granby Facebook page.
Oh, yeah, Granby, I'm sure Granby living will let us know.
Can I suggest one additional question or one, one additional thought? Plan of conservation and development, that's a balance, you know, and if you have conservation on this side and you have development on this side and you have a line between them, and it says now, where are we? Are we heavy on the development side or heavy on the conservation side? Where do you want us to be 10 years from now? Heavy on the development side, heavy on the conservation side? But I mean, you, because that's really sort of forces that, that thinking about the balance, is it zero in the middle, half and half, or how do you even define that?
I think it's almost too abstract. I think being more specific is...
Well, I'm not saying get rid of the specific ones, but just the, that's, that's really the fight, you know, I mean, right? Isn't that the ultimate over the next 10 years, that balance of, of the conservation?
Needs to be.
Yeah.
Do we need, as a town, do we need to focus more on conservation? Do we need to focus? That's what you think.
Yeah, so, yes, right, exact, just that, and you'll obviously get a lot of that out of the details, but...
I, I just think that's, I think that's so theoretical that I, I don't think it'll really give us anything useful, anything we can really use. I think what you'll get is, oh, there should be more developments, so my taxes can go like down, just like, everybody says that until, okay, it's going next to your house. I, I don't, I, I just think that's too abstract. I think that's more what we have to come up with out of this detailed information. So, and then other work, the other workshop information. I'm going to submit that it's nine o'clock and dipping into the... Dipping into the detailed stuff on the, the Granby preservation, both the plan of conservation and development.
Can I make just a quick question, just a quick comment on that?
Yeah.
What I tried to do is I tried to go through the document. I said, well, how can we make this easier to manage, you know, because there's all those paragraphs, and some of the paragraphs have 10 individual tasks listed in them and all that. So all I did is I, I just said, well, let's just make it into individual kind of little data snippets and just printed out the table of contents. That's just a job aid to help you kind of say, all right, what's in here, you know, and so this was more, if that kind of thing helps over the next couple of, you know, months where we have to go through and say, oh, we've got to get rid of that, we can either edit it in the document, we can edit it in the list, we can do both, but I just, I was sort of in a way offering up, if, if there are things that people say, gee, I'd sure like a list of all of the goals, well, that's what I wanted to try to put together. So that's the own, really at this point in time, the only purpose of that is if there are job aids that help you, you know, just ask, I'm happy to try to, you know, put it in some format. And the other thing, there's one chart in there, which, this is 2016, I didn't edit anything, all I did is pull it, it just says, huh, we have primary entities. So who are we assigning all this work to, basically, you know, and it's, whoa.
I had a chance to review it and I actually did find it really useful, so I would...
For future.
Yeah, so I would ask the, before we, we'll, so we have the, we have the workshop coming up, that's going to be all devoted to what we've put together tonight, and then we should, do we have one more meeting before the holiday or no?
There's...
If we don't, I think we better sell one.
Yes, the 26th, which is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Oh, okay.
That won't be bad.
What's the difference between the...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, the Tuesday, what am I looking at?
Yeah, the Tuesday.
Tuesday, the 25th.
So at, at that meeting, I mean, obviously we're going to want to go over the information that we, that, Granby, that Abby pulled together for us, what we learned from the workshop, but I think at that point we really want to, do want to start talking about what process are we going to use to write our, write our plan, and I think that's when, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to call your name.
Ken.
Ken, we're, so we have two Kents.
That's right.
Take a look at this. I, I did find it really helpful in terms of sort of all the, all the pieces and how they fit together, so I would ask that folks look at that. And then we'll really start to talk about how, how are we going to produce that for them? What steps are we going to follow for that? And then I know that December particularly with people with large local families, which I am not one of, have a lot to do in December, but I'll really try to take a hard, a hard look at the pieces and how we might divvy them up before our first meeting in January.
What's the significance of this package versus what we got last time? I'm just trying to understand the...
Oh, is this what you...
Oh, this is the one, now, now you say 125, these are all the goals. Got you, got you, got you.
Just abstract it for ease of use, that's...
It's just easier to flip a pack and forth, and I did find it really helpful.
One quick question before we go. So I will work on pulling together the rest of the workshop stuff to get that in a better format. I'll work on compiling all the survey questions we came up with. When do we want that survey to go out? Do we want it to coincide with the public workshop? Do we want to have an announcement go out in the drummer in December that this is available? What are your thoughts on that?
I'd like to do the workshop first.
Okay.
Because I feel like we'll get different kinds of feedback at the workshop, and if we announce the survey beforehand, I think we'll get less participation in the workshop. So my thinking is have the workshop and then the next issue of, put it up right after that.
Yep.
And next issue of the drummer announce it.
Okay.
Maybe saying if you didn't have a chance to participate, here's an opportunity to take a survey and...
These are...
Or go to the website or Facebook page and find the...
And with that November meeting, are we back at town hall?
November 25th, yes, they'll be back at town hall.
Our, our, most of our regular meetings, we're just taking the second meeting that would otherwise have been a P and Z meeting. That's why we had the, that P and Z meeting before our meeting tonight, because we had something that couldn't wait until after Thanksgiving for planning and zoning to address it. So...
And, sorry, Chris.
No, go ahead.
So because we won't have another meeting before the workshop, what I'll do, when I have all of the data in boards formatted, that'll be on display to kind of provide information for folks to be used as a reference, I'll send them out, and if anyone sees anything that needs to be changed or something else that would be helpful to add, please just let me know, and I'll add that to make sure we have things finalized for that Thursday.
I mean, I certainly, I certainly understand that not everybody can be at every meeting. I mean, our chair is here tonight, but it'd be great if a, a large number of us could be at that workshop, just to be floating around, making it clear that, you know, we're receptive, we really want to hear what you think. If, if we're, if we don't take it seriously, they won't either.
Should you want us there like a half hour before, so we can kind of like, maybe plan at that point?
That wouldn't be, that's, for people who can make it a half an hour earlier, that'd be great. We could sort of see what the setup all looks like and where we might want to station people, or whether we all just want to circulate around.
Is it starting at seven or...
Starting at seven.
I have a conflict that evening unfortunately.
Oh, that's too bad. I have a feeling you'll be contributing a great deal to the data analysis part of our project.
Happy to do it. It's my happy place.
Well, thank, thank you all. This was really, really helpful. I mean, I, I can't remember if I told you guys what my day job is. I'm a, I'm an attorney. I represent public school boards in Connecticut, and I can't tell you how many meetings I've been at where the superintendent, who's the equivalent of Abby in our scenario, looks like he's about, he or she is about to say, if this doesn't end in 10 minutes, I'm going to kill myself.
Wow, are you?
And I feel like, I feel like everybody had, everybody was really thoughtful and had good ideas and felt free to share them, and that's great. So I appreciate, I appreciate the work very much.
Nice job, Abby and Renee.
Yes. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion every adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second, third, fourth.
All in favor, whatever.
Hi.